I will call back to orders, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
For item 60, I do need a motion to continue this to May 14th. This is the Capitol Public Radio Fee Waiver, request for a fee waiver for a use permit located at 7351 Eagles Nest Road in the Vineyard Community.
So moved.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 61 is the Escatón Carmichael Assisted Living Facility, a zoning ordinance amending amendment to the Escatón Special Planning Area and Design Review of a Proposed Assisted Living Facility for a property located at 3939 Walnut Avenue. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your planning director, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this This is the Escatón Carmichael Project, as indicated, located on Walnut Avenue, south of Gibbons in the Carmichael Community. The request is a zoning ordinance amendment. The site is currently zoned special planning area, so it amends that SPA to allow assisted living facilities as a permitted use within the property in addition to the other permitted uses that are already in the SPA. And it's also a design review for a 31, little under 32,000 square foot assisted living facility and judged against compliance with the adopted special planning area and countywide design guidelines. Just as a little bit of background, there was originally an in-holding parcel here that was zoned limited commercial. I believe it had a Circle K on it historically, and so it had this LC zoning that was outside of the special planning area, and that is part of the site where this assisted living facility will be built. So there was a certificate of compliance to reorganize some of the parcel boundaries that ended up with split zoning, and so this fixes that and brings all of that site into the special planning area. So I've already mentioned the zoning ordinance amendment, the development design review, there was a negative declaration that was prepared, looking at land use, noise, traffic, hazardous materials, and cultural resources. I'm going to go over four items in the next couple of slides. First, starting with this site plan. It's a little faded up on the screen here, but there is, here is the building, and Walnut is on the south end, so the north arrow is actually off to the right. North is not going up on this graphic, it's over to the right. And they are saving a very large walnut tree, kind of in the upper right-hand side, and I think that'll be, show up later in another slide here. Here is a picture of the elevation of the buildings. These are one-story in nature, even though they do have a fair amount of height with them. It's not a multi-story building, but they do have a lot of articulation and features. I do have Sarah Ellison, the architect here, to answer any questions that the board members may have about the particular architecture and how that relates to the rest of the site. The next graphic is sort of imposing the new building on an aerial of the site, and this shows a little bit better, that large walnut tree that's over to the right-hand side of the building, that footprint that's shown in green. There's a very large, very gorgeous old walnut tree that's going to be saved here. There were, this exhibit really shows the distance between the building and residential. The SPA standard is that in order to exceed the height limits, the building needs to be set back from residential zoning. In this case, walnut itself is zoned residential. So the standard is 100 feet, so clearly they are closer than 100 feet to walnut, but the actual distance to any residence is more like 151 feet. So we felt that that was reasonable, particularly again because it's a single-story building. There's also some questions at the hearing about trash pickup. The trash enclosure is kind of immediately at the southwest corner of the building, kind of to the left, off that private drive, so it's well interior to the site. And there was also a last-minute question that came in yesterday about the site plan and the use of the vacant property on the left here where they show future parking.
Are you, I'm not seeing anything showing up on the screen from where I sit, anyway.
Okay.
As if you're trying to point something out.
The pointer doesn't work? Yeah.
Not on the screen.
Yeah, so...
We don't see the pointer, is the point.
I can't see it up there either.
Yeah, it's...
Usually I can see it red.
There it is, a little bit.
I don't think it's going to, it's not going to show up, right?
It's not designed to show up.
Yeah, so, so there is a vacant property that's not part of this design review, and there was a public inquiry yesterday about whether they're going to use that for parking. That's what I want to point out, is we did not cover that as part of this design review, and if they come back in, they will have to do design review on that parking lot. And there's also a provision in the SPA that says any use would have to have a 25-foot buffer between residential and the developed portion of the parking lot. So that would be a future review that we would do, and there's already a built-in setback in the SPA, but it's not part of this project.
And when you say "future review," that would go to staff and then it would come back to the board?
The design review would not typically come to the board. It would typically be done either at the staff level or at the planning commission, but not the board.
Okay.
Well, I'm reluctant to leave this photo because I just think it leaves a lot of questions. I don't, I never did see where you said the trash enclosure was going to be. Is it those two lines that look like a door up there?
Yes, yes.
So what are the, in the center of the building that's facing south, I guess, what are those boxes?
That's just the entry.
Oh, that's a walkway and a patio, then?
That's the walkway and the patio, and the entry, the overhanging.
Okay. What's the main entrance to the facility?
I think there are multiple entrances. I assume that a lot of the folks will be coming off the parking lot in the back into the building. You can see that center area there, but there is also parking on the south side of the building. But the, yeah, the main...
So on the... Sure. West side there, what are all the black curly cues? This is a crazy drawing.
All right, let's, let's do this. Here we go. Thank you. So this is basically showing how the site is integrate, going to integrate into the rest of the development. So these are parking spaces here. This is parking over here. Here is the trash enclosure. Here's the large tree that's being saved. And then here's the site that we had an inquiry on yesterday that's not part of this review.
Okay, back to the first thing, when you were talking about how it was going to integrate there, is that a, what's the half-circle there? Yeah, that...
Just, this is a walkway and kind of a landscape area. So this is kind of the driveway through here.
So it's a connection to the other buildings?
Yes. It's a connection to the other buildings, yes. Any other questions on the site plan? Okay, so this is another exhibit showing a photo along Walnut, as well as the landscaping plan, and they will be doing extensive landscaping along Walnut to match the rest of the site. So you do have recommendations for approval from the Design Review Advisory Committee, unanimous recommendation for approval from the Carmichael Community Planning Advisory Council, and from the Planning Commission, as well as staff approval. The staff recommendations are that you determine the environmental analysis is adequate and complete and adopt a negative declaration, approve the zoning ordinance amendment, find the project in substantial compliance with the SPA and the countywide design guidelines subject to findings and conditions and attachment to. And I did want to note for the record, there is no zoning ordinance amendment, so all of the conditions listed in attachment to will be design review conditions. And that concludes the staff presentation, and we do have Sarah Ellis from the...
Yeah, I'd like to have her come. I have several questions.
Sarah Ellis, Ellis Architects, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So now that we've gotten on to page eight, I can see the entrance is, it looks like the main entrance is facing the other buildings on site?
Okay. I'm sorry, could you say your question again, so I make sure I have...
Where's the primary entrance?
Okay, so just, just a little bit of orientation. This is Walnut Avenue here. There's a gated main entrance to the campus in this area here. In the photo, it's just to the right of the photo.
I don't mean to the facility, I mean to this building.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with the site.
That's fine. I was just going to explain how someone might approach the building, and that might explain the entrance. But I was just going to explain that when you get through the gate, you come around and there's a, there's a port-cochere, which is a drop-off area for this building, on the west side of the middle part of the building. That's the main entrance to the building. There's another entrance and exit on the south side, adjacent to some parking spaces on the south side of an access drive on that side. That's the primary parking, I'm sorry, primary entrance points for the building. Those two areas.
So there's four entrances, is that what you're saying?
No, there's one right in the middle here.
That's the primary entrance?
Yeah, and then there's a secondary, mostly an exit, but on the south side of the building.
Okay, so we don't have the plan, so what happens when you walk inside the building? There's a, what, a central area and a, our rooms down a spine on either side? Oh.
Ask and you shall receive.
Okay, so the main entrance, as you come in from the port-cochere, is into, through a vestibule into a waiting area, reception area. Adjacent to that is the main dining room, a sort of public functions in this sort of main central area. There's some support, support uses on either side of this dining room experience. And then basically the units that are shown in yellow, those are one-story, I'm sorry, one-bedroom units, and the orange units on the corners are two-bedroom units. The, the south wing has...
How many units altogether?
There's 20 units.
20?
Mm-hmm. 16 one-bedroom and four two-bedroom units. The central area on the south wing has some support services, but then a large activity room in the center, and then sort of a shared common living room on the other side of that that makes this space more of a common, shared area in the middle. The, the north wing just has a corridor, but at the end of the corridor, there's a common living room that has views out to the walnut tree and the rest of the facility, or I'm sorry, the rest of the campus from the north side.
Is, my understanding is there were, I thought there were going to be patios on the rooms.
Those were removed from the project in sort of the last revision. There are some concerns about the residents and some concerns about having access to, I don't know how to say this, the, some concerns about safety and having those patios. They were also, as this project has been evolving over the last couple of years, costs of construction have increased, and so some value needed, some, some value engineering needed to happen to bring the cost more within a budget, so the balconies were removed. There are shared patio areas that residents can use.
Okay, so they will be able to go outside and...
Yeah, so outside of the dining room along Walnut, there's patios at both the south and the north ends that will provide extra...
What are the building materials of the exterior facade?
Yeah, so there's, I don't know if this has, okay. The exterior building materials are some fiber cement siding, lap siding...
Or what?
Fiber cement lap siding and a combination of cement plaster for the exterior primarily.
Are the, are the colors of the exterior portrayed correctly on the...
Yeah, the only slight difference is that the exterior, there's an exterior green color that's been changed, is going to be changed to a beige color that matches the color scheme of the entrance gate that's just to the north of this building. But the blue and then the white and the beige are all represented correctly on the drawings.
So that doesn't seem to integrate well with the rest of the campus, which is...
Well, the existing campus is, is old and in need of an update, and so the idea is to kind of take this building and, and use it as a catalyst for future improvements on the other buildings so that it will become more in line with that, integrate that color scheme throughout. There is some blue on the existing buildings, so that ties in there. There's cement plaster, gable forms throughout, especially on the Village Center and the assisted and nursing building, just across the west driveway that related to that current design.
Are you talking about where the current assisted living is?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Are you talking about where the current assisted living is?
Yeah, current assisted living and the skilled nursing next to it, just across the way. There's a lot of gable forms and cement plaster. The color scheme is in need of an update, but again, this building is going to kind of allow that change to kind of happen in the future when improvements happen on those buildings.
How far in the future?
That's a good question, one that I can answer, but maybe someone from Escatón can address that, if needed.
Right now, it just looks like a completely separate project. That's why I'm asking. Does anyone up there in the seats know the answer to that question?
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Erin with Escatón, and I do the Capitol Planning for Escatón, so the intention would be to phase the project, starting with the buildings that are closest to the street and work our way back. It would be phased over time as the budget allows, but I mean, it's in the plans to do it, so it's not like it's 10 years in the future or anything like that.
Okay.
And we've already started with the gatehouse, and that's the color that is represented on this building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions? I have no comment cards from the audience, so discussion on the board.
There she is.
Are you done?
Yes. No further.
We did get one communication, came through the planning department and...
No speakers, any speaker requests?
No speakers, yeah. I was just going to say that that was, was only one comment, so did it get addressed? Do you know?
Yes, that was in relation to that adjacent site and the fact that it's indicated as the potential for future parking.
Which would be a separate action, it's not included in this.
Right, and is governed by standards in the SPA, and our project manager did call that person back and explained that, and there is a 25-foot setback requirement adjacent to residential embedded in the SPA. And so any development of that future parking lot would be subject to that 25-foot setback unless they asked for a deviation through a public hearing process.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so there's no one here else that wants to speak and no board comments, I'll move approval to the recommended action with the language changes that LeAnn Moffett brought up.
The board will second, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 62 is the report back on general plan policy AG5.
All right, good afternoon, members of the board. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation, this is a verbal presentation only, no graphics here. This is a report back on general plan policy AG5, and as background, during the hearings on the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan in the fall of 2018, some questions arose, particularly from several stakeholders, including the Sacramento County Farm Bureau and the Central Valley Farmland Trust, about general plan policy agricultural element five. So that general plan policy, which is covered in your board report, as well as the original board report for the February 5th hearing, does indicate the potential to allow the stacking of habitat mitigation as well as farmland mitigation when impacts are identified through your SEQA review. It doesn't require that mitigation to be stacked, but it does allow for that consideration. And there was some concerns that there should be potentially separate farmland mitigation from habitat mitigation. So staff did prepare a report back for the February 5th hearing date. That ended up, item was continued as staff and the board members wanted, so that staff could go meet with the Sacramento County Advisory Committee. Staff did go to the AG Advisory Committee meeting on March 13th, and they did indicate that they would favor implementation measure J, which is on page two of the staff report, that the county staff and that the board directed county staff develop and consider the items in that implementation measure J that will, I will let you read, I will not read the whole thing out loud, which is like to develop a separate fund or ordinance or others, otherwise. The staff analysis and the staff recommendation, however, is that we have a mechanism for evaluating this through the current SEQA process. Because an impact would have to be identified, either through the current SEQA process or even if we developed an implementation program with a fund, there would still need to be a nexus and an impact. We think that doing it through SEQA can meet the intent of measure J without the creation of a county-involved managed fund or process. The original staff report for February 5th has a couple of projects listed on page two of that report. I was going to focus on two which have been completed. Those two are Cordova Hills and Aspen 8 and 9, where there were SEQA documents prepared. In both of those cases, the kind of habitat that was being disturbed by the project was grassland, foraging habitat, tended to be vernal pool habitat, and the in-kind habitat replacement that was required was similar in nature to the kind of land that was lost, also foraging grazing land. And so neither of those SEQA documents identified the need for separate farmland mitigation as opposed to the habitat mitigation. That can be contrasted with an older example that's not referenced in that staff report, but that a couple of us recall from way back in the day, which is the East Franklin specific plan. It's an area that ended up being in the city of Elk Grove, and in that case, there was active dairy lands with farmland investments that were being disturbed by the project, and there was a mitigation for farm, there was a mitigation measure in the SEQA document calling for separate farmland mitigation. So we do see a potential distinction between types of projects depending on the nature of the project and the nature of the land that is being disturbed. I also want to note that now that we have an AG Advisory Committee that has been created and is up and running, planning and environmental review staff will be taking the projects that are triggered by this review, which I didn't state before, but is projects that are 50 acres in size or larger, which are typically large enough to trigger a SEQA document, we will be going to the AG Advisory Committee for them to help vet whether there are separate farmland impacts above and beyond the habitat impacts and the habitat mitigation that may be worthy of board consideration through the SEQA process. So that is, this concludes the staff presentation, and I also have Todd Smith here with planning and environmental review to assist me in answering any questions that you may have.
Subriss and Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. Well, thanks, LeAnn, and certainly thank Todd and John Lundgren, both for their work. I know that we had a different meeting at the Farm Bureau offices on Friday, in the afternoon, Good Friday, and they were both there, meeting with Charlotte Mitchell from the Farmland Trust and Chris Flores from the AG Commissioner's Office, and I know Lindsay was in and out of both meetings, Lindsay Liebig from the Farm Bureau. Appreciate the effort and certainly the spirit in which you bring this report back and the one previously. I've had a chance to talk with LeAnn a bit, briefings yesterday, and certainly very respectful and understanding of what's being recommended here, or at least what's been outlined, and recommendation not to, at least at this juncture, in light of, I guess, competing priorities pursue this. But I think what's important, and I stated this to LeAnn yesterday, I get it about the SEQA, I think we all do, certainly recall the East Franklin very well, the discussion in that case, it was going to be a one-to-one mitigation set aside for certain lands that had been identified, if I recall correctly, it was a couple thousand acres, and it was going to be done elsewhere in the plan area. But the point I want to make, I think I touched on this a bit previously, is that unless we have this tool established, we can do the evaluation, which we will do, I have every bit of faith that will be done, I think with the Agricultural Advisor Committee, that can option, you know, get an opportunity to look at that in greater depth with folks who are actively engaged in farming and ranching activities or certainly knowledgeable about them. But that the general plan, which we went through great lengths in the 2011 general plan to talk about a whole host of things, and there are many, many different types of implementation measures, if we don't have this, we may have this tool at our disposal, but if we don't have something that activates it, then I think what my view would happen over time, and again, certainly, I guess, time would prove whether it's right or wrong, is that thus far, for projects since the East Franklin one, and you mentioned Cordova Hills and the Aspen, where they had grazing lands, which those were brought into the calculation into the discussion in the general plan in 2011, that for those areas that are intensely farmed or have other agricultural attributes, they're, you know, soil categorization, irrigation and so forth, that I think it's because of what we've put into practice in recent times is that we certainly do allow stacking, I'm not advocating we don't allow that, but I think as we look, look at AG lands and we look at the aspect of what agriculture contributes to this county, we've got a half a billion dollars in farm gate activity in this county, so it's significant. It's a significant industry, it's a, you know, it's a important pursuit for folks not only employed in it, but certainly food and fiber for our communities, but also for the state and nation and the world in a lot of cases. And I think that recognizing that, you know, we'll do SEQA documents, look at individual projects and take that calculation into account, but then you get to the juncture where you're taking a look at that and you don't have a measure in place that really allows you to trigger, you know, outside of finding some offset or saying now, well, now we're going to have to go out and create a program. I'm not looking just to, for exercise, but I think otherwise, we're kind of in one lane right now, and that is, and as I said this to LeAnn yesterday, it's a bit, it's very latent, if we don't have an implementation measure, even if you don't have all the structure for the fund and so forth, people presume they're not going to pay a fee in order to do that, because thus far, we've allowed for stacking and getting credits for, you know, and rightfully so. Both those projects, this board has passed and proven, and I supported both those projects that were outlined, and we have some other ones that are coming forward that may not have intensively farmed areas, but I think the standpoint of our AG Advisor Committee, certainly staff analysis, I recognize this, you know, has to get worked into a work program if we give the direction to do it. You know, we're eight years beyond the adoption of general plan, pretty soon we're going to be into an updated general plan, and we have a lot of implementation measures and lots of different sections that, you know, won't have been achieved because of obviously just the tasks that are embodied in that. I think this is an important one, one that we need to involve, certainly the, you know, development industry, but certainly agricultural industry. I think we're at a juncture where obviously we're seeing, you know, discussion about, you know, community growth and development, we have our own general plan, and we're looking at a corridor that, you know, isn't, you know, threatening, you know, in a lot of cases, prime farmlands, although there's probably some, but we do have other places in the general plan, both in north and south, where those would get environmentally reviewed in the SEQA process, but you come down to it at the time of the hearing, and again, looking forward, and you don't have this, and so folks, well, you don't have a program, and they're, you know, people are always interested in getting their, advancing their projects and so forth. Yes, the board could say you got to do a one-to-one mitigation, or you got to pay a fee. I think we should have some structure, at least a framework in place, and again, I would certainly be, you know, interested to hear from, you know, you know, LeAnn or Todd or others about that, and I think, again, I don't see it has to be urgently done tomorrow, but I think we got to, you know, get a plan of action and begin to work, go to work on this, recognizing that it maybe has to be, maybe has to be integrated into other work... that it maybe has to be, maybe has to be integrated into other work because we have an interest and we have continuing development proposals that are going to come before this board over time. And just to always presume that they get the benefit of stacking because we have an HCP and they pay that fee, and then we mitigate for habitat, but we then give them the benefit mitigating for farmland impacts as a part of that. And so in some ways, they get a bit of a pass. Not that it hasn't been SEQA evaluated and it may be grazing lands or less, less prime farmlands. And so I guess, kind of sum it up, I would just say that I'm of the opinion and view that implementation measure J was integral to the general plan adoption, certainly to AG5, which we spent a lot of time talking about those categories and about acreage thresholds and about how that would, you know, be connected to development over time. We've just, you know, recently concluded the, you know, years-long, decades-long effort on the HCP. I think this is equally important, and not just for the southern part of the county, but there are other areas in the county as well. And so taking that into consideration, I think this needs to be a priority and obviously one that this board, you know, could, you know, should take a look at and decide if it's something that's of a high priority for us collectively. But again, it's not to counter what Leanne said, that I think staff certainly is looking out in their view, but that comes a little narrower than I think the broader implementation of this potentially. And again, we always reserve the right as a board certainly to implement that in a way, obviously, that takes into account factors you cited in both staff reports, Leanne, and I appreciate that work. So I don't know if there's anything you wanted to respond to. Again, you know, it's not a counterpoint, but I just, again, I, as I've reflected on this, I think this is important, and it's one of those tools that shouldn't just be latent in the tool chest. You should have, at least have some framework so that you aren't starting from scratch and you get to a board decision and they say, well, you don't have that, so the only way we're going to do this now is you're going to stack. And you're not going to have to mitigate for farmland in a way that would maybe provide it forward through these other mechanisms if we were to ultimately vet this and go through a process to bring this into the general plan context with a, you know, fully vetted in any way implementation measure. So I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add, Leanne.
I don't think I have too much to add.
So I don't know if you have any speakers, Mr. Chair or not.
No, there's no, oh, yes, we do have speakers, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Lindsey Liebig, followed, of course, by Charlotte Mitchell.
By the way, I would acknowledge there are 667 implementation measures in the general plan, so I recognize this has some healthy competition in the context of priorities, so.
Good afternoon, Lindsey Liebig, Executive Director, Sacramento County Farm Bureau. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this back before you again. It was something that both Charlotte and myself talked with each one of you about during the SS HCP, you know, final discussions. And to say that we're disappointed with the staff's recommendation would probably be an understatement. I feel like we showed up at the table and worked very hard for decades, you know, working on the SS HCP and really trying to provide a voice to agriculture in there and came out with a really robust habitat preservation plan. We're asking for the same robust language for agriculture, and we see this as a way to, you know, look at these things on a case-by-case basis, which doesn't, you know, present a strong foothold for agriculture in this county, leaves a lot of room for leeway and loopholes. And then even in the fact that in this policy, there's opportunities to mitigate outside of Sacramento County, really shows us no preservation for agriculture and the importance of that, of those lands in this county. So, you know, we've asked, you know, several times to just have this be, as Supervisor Natoli said, you know, a priority and something that is, you know, having given the same robust nature that the HCP did and that we are still continuing to work with that so that agriculture has that equal footing. And that's what we're continuing to ask for, is just making sure that those implementation measures are there and they're utilized as appropriate and really showing a strong protection of agricultural lands in this county and not just on a case-by-case basis, you know, when it's deemed appropriate at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. You actually got five minutes of time into two. That was.
Very good.
Charlotte.
Charlotte Mitchell, California Farmland Trust, formerly Central Valley Farmland Trust, and certainly echo Lindsey's position. I spent more than a decade going to weekly meetings, if not several times a week, for the Habitat Conservation Plan. Farm Bureau invested a lot of time and resources, legal advisory, as well as our state organization. So to, at the end of the day, be told one thing, yes, we will work with you, we'll listen to you, and then at the end of the day, not, it is disappointing. The Ag Advisory Committee listened to staff. Staff said it's going to cost too much to be able to go back in the general plan and do any revisions. It's too expensive for developers to do farmland mitigation, so why would we impose that onto them? Since on the dollar, when you consider labor is probably their biggest challenge that they have today, that it should be done on a case-by-case basis. I sat here in front of this board maybe 10 years ago when that case-by-case basis came up and said, we'll only do this once, quoted by a supervisor. It'll only happen once. We'll approve this development project, it won't happen again. That development project now has engulfed agricultural land to where there's an island created for farmers that can't be, can't be economically viable anymore. So the only question is, why are we going to save them? Let's just develop the whole thing. And there's still areas within the county's urban areas where Ag land is still a viable economic unit and should be protected. This body needs to be a leadership within this county to other jurisdictions to say, you need to do the same thing. Farmland is an important component, economic engine of the county. Set an example so our other local jurisdictions and LAFCO can follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Thanks. Mr. Chair, again, I don't know if there's any other questions of staff, but again, I think, you know, not to offer a counterpoint, but I, for one, think that we need to make this a priority and that, you know, we've dealt with case-by-case, certainly even pre-adoption of the latest version of the general plan. And I think to the point about the HCP, all of us certainly currently seated here, you know, have weighed in on that in recent years, but I know that over the course of certainly 20-plus years that, you know, countless meetings, a lot of discussion regarding that, and when we were in this chambers, I think to what Lindsey said and Charlotte referenced as well, and talking about the HCP last summer and certainly looking to its adoption and implementation, that we, and again, we fulfill the first portion of that is to have this review of AG5. I appreciate where Leanne and certainly her staff come from, again, competing priorities, but I believe, not just on behalf of the district I represent, but I think on behalf of this county, that the agricultural component is key to our economy and it anchors, you know, you know, one segment of our local economy and certainly our heritage. And I think that we as a county have shown good leadership and stewardship in many respects, and certainly our general plan reflected that. And again, Leanne, you were here as we went through that, and so was Todd and John. And again, you could pick lots of different things, but I think when it comes down to, on the heels of the HCP, which will continue to work through the implementation of that, and obviously some of, I think, the unsettledness that folks in the farming and ranch community had about that and what impacts, but I think as we look at development and certainly environmental and biological mitigations and agriculture, we need to keep that in the framework of when projects come before us, not just on a case-by-case basis. So I guess I would be prepared to make a motion, assuming that there's a second and there's a willingness by this board to give some further direction to Leanne and her staff, obviously, like have to prioritize this, and I know you've obviously given us the cautions, but I don't see this being any less important than a lot of other things that are embedded there, recognizing that we have a lot of pressures as a county and one that continues to, to take on the role of urbanizing and certainly, you know, rebuilding in areas where we've already urbanized, and our general plan allows for that. I think our general plan needs to have a strong implementation measure in there. And again, it'll be properly vetted. It won't be something that's going to be just imposed on folks, but use our Agricultural Advisor Committee, our farmers and ranchers, and certainly our development and environmental communities, just as we did with HCP. Take this seriously, let's do it, let's be, you know, again, I don't think we have to recreate the wheel necessarily. I think there are examples, but we want to make sure it fits for our community, for our county and for the people that, you know, collectively represent. So I would, again, I'd give direction today because they're not recommending for this, but that we actually go forward and have a proposal come back for us to look at the development of measure J implementation and what goes into that, a work program, maybe so we have an idea what's going to take to accomplish that, both cost-wise, but certainly from a standpoint of time-wise in particular.
Okay, as we know, this is a report back and not an action item, but we'll hear from the rest of the board.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I'm concerned about having everything on your list a priority, and so if you're going to come back on this, I'd like to know what it's competing with. What are the, what are the other priorities for time and expense?
We could report back on that. I think, you know, one of the things that's fundamental to staff recommendation is it's not just about the competing priorities. It really is staff's recommendation that fundamentally looking at things through each individual project SEQA document can get us the same, to the same end result. So we'd be happy to report about the priorities, but our staff's recommendation stands regardless of the prioritization issue. So I just wanted to clarify that. But we can certainly report back about if it is the direction of the board to work on this, how we would go about doing that and what other items that might affect.
So I, the only reason I said that is if someone said it was a, you know, it was receivable file or it was going to come back, if it's, so it probably depends on what the various motions might be.
Well, it's a report back, is all it says. It's not an action item at this time.
I mean, we did list in the staff report.
I'm looking at it, recommend an action.
Recommend an action, if you look, though, it's no action.
Oh, I see, do not. Okay, all right, okay, so. I'm used to voting on everything.
Supervisor Frost.
So I guess I, I have, you know, over time, been learning a lot about land planning over the last couple of years. And a lot of the steps that developers and everybody has to go through in order to create attainable housing opportunities, and given that we are already able to meet the required needs without another step or another layer of, you know, overview or bureaucracy, I wonder if it makes sense to add another layer when we already have the, the process in place to, to make sure that we're doing the right thing and mitigating, you know, any, any impact to our farmlands. And I, I'm not sure adding another layer or a totally different mitigation, separate, you know, you know, separate for agriculture over, over what we've already got going when we're already on a case-by-case basis. There's a lot of situations where it may not, there may not even be an impact to agriculture lands, and it may not even apply to that project. So are we, are we, are we talking about a whole nother layer of regulation that would be separate from what we're already doing or, and on top of what we're already doing? Because we're already stacking easements and doing, mitigating as necessary based on the SEQA. So is that what we're talking about when we're talking about an agricultural element, implementation of a whole new process, just that separates out every single project, whether they relate to, whether they have any impact on agriculture or not?
Yeah, I mean, we, we haven't developed a program yet, so it's difficult for me to stand here and speculate what it might look like after we got through a dialogue and a presumed working process with the various stakeholders. You know, the, the kinds of things that we have done in the past, the Swainson Talk Program, staff has managed, which allows small property owners to fee out, and then we acquire the land. So that's something we're familiar with, that the HCP is generally, for much of the county, going to replace. But again, it comes back to the identification of what's the impact, and if you're going to layer a fee like you did with the HCP, in that case, the HCP had a fairly sophisticated nexus analysis with the identification of what the nexus was between the impact and the fee. And so we would have to potentially look at something like that, or if we were going to do a blanket fee, or maybe it's some other different approach. I don't know, we haven't, we haven't developed a program, so I'm sort of speculating. And Todd, I don't know if you have anything else you want to weigh in on.
I do want to add or reiterate, I guess, what Leanne has said, that staff's position on this is purely from the perspective of having to administer a new program. We don't inherently disagree with the testimony from Charlotte and Lindsey at all. We totally understand where they're coming from, and we do believe that the Ag community is a vital part of the Sacramento region's economy. We are the farm-to-fork capital after all. But we fundamentally believe that the SEQA process provides for a mechanism to achieve a certain desired outcome on a case-by-case basis, depending on the unique characteristics of a given project. From staff's perspective, we do agree or believe that there are protections in AG5 and other policies in the Ag element, as well as the land use element, such as defending where the urban services boundary is as a way of constraining growth in the county. The current important farmland map that's published every couple of years by the state shows all the prime farmland, the majority of the prime farmland, excuse me, is located outside the urban services boundary, so the county is not, and for the most part, developing within prime farmland. So I guess the conclusion.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
The conclusion is there's a way to get there without a county-run program.
And so what is the difference between where we're at now, where we are already getting there, and the other scenario? Is it the only difference is that it's a fee system that's put into place? Or what is the difference? What will we accomplish that we don't, aren't doing now? Because I have, I, I want to protect our farmlands too. I'm not, I'm not able to express it as well as you just, but ditto on what you just said. I feel the same way. But I'm curious to know what is the difference?
That's a good question. I don't know that there is a fundamental difference in the outcome. I suppose from one perspective, it could be viewed that the county would be taking a leadership role when it comes to agriculture and establishing a framework that I think that Supervisor Natoli alluded to. And that was something that we heard during our conversation with the stakeholders on last Friday. But beyond the existing policies, we're not clear on exactly what that might be at this time.
So would it require more staff or a financial commitment, a large financial commitment to change, to make an amendment to the general plan? I'm not sure. I don't know what that means.
I mean, I guess I, I sort of presume we would be going through an analysis of what you would be looking at in each project-by-project DIR, trying to frame up when those impacts would exist and under what circumstance. And so you would be doing that both in the individual project DIRs as well as coming up with a construct in terms of, you know, in this circumstance, there's this impact. But you'd be doing it on a more theoretical framework sort of basis.
So you feel like we'd be duplicating our, what we're already doing? We're already doing it.
I mean, I guess, again, but we haven't developed a program or interacted with stakeholders, so I feel a little like I'm struggling to describe what the program would be in the absence of going through a process to develop it, admittedly, but yeah.
Mr. Gill.
I think if the, what I'm hearing is that we have a supervisor that is instituted on overall program, and staff's recommendation is go through the SEQA process, not to keep belaboring this issue, but we could bring back what that will look like. And if there is redundancy, the questions you're asking, we're not equipped at this point to answer that. But we can bring you back a framework, what that will look like, and then pose that policy question back to you.
Mr. Natoli, can I jump in?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. I think that's the direction we need to go in today. I think that there is a interest in making sure that we're doing everything we can that's reasonable and not necessarily duplicative of fees and processes that are already in place. But I think there is a sensitivity to protecting the Ag land that we have in this county and the, the fact that we are the farm-to-fork capital of the this county, and the fact that we are the farm-to-fork capital of the nation, or at least self-proclaimed, and the fact that it is a significant part of our economy. So, I think that we need to send this one back a bit, because personally, I don't think this is it. I think that this is burdensome to the point of being, or overburdensome to the point of being duplicative and overly, when you already have SEQUA, you already have the HCP. But that's not to say that we have overturned every stone to figure out, is there something that we can do to actually get closer to where Supervisor Natoli wants, but something that maybe doesn't go, reach as far as Measure J. Is that fair enough, sir?
Yeah, I think it's fine. Measure J, it didn't say case-by-case, and it didn't say, "How are you going to do this?" And so, I think to the chair's point, you know, coming back, I mean, again, as I've listened here, certainly to my colleagues, I think, you know, they're all fair questions, and I think this information that sport needs to have, you know, again, I respect the staff recommendation, but, you know, the general plan was adopted by this board, and it called it an implementation measure, we have the ability to wrestle with that, as to how that looks and how it might impact. And I think one thing I just wanted to maybe put a finer point to is that we're not talking, you know, I don't think there's any conceivable way you could say, if you don't have an impact, that you're going to pay some fee or be required to mitigate. I mean, that's clearly, and so, these are projects that would have an impact, and I think, again, to the basic question, if, you know, if in fact, you do the SEQUA analysis, you're going to know, at least from that standpoint, then how then do you implement for addressing that issue? And is it, you know, is it a separate program? Is it something that's combined with? Right now, in a lot of cases, they can, if they can do the habitat conservation, they can just stack it on top of the farmland, and they get the okay on it, generally. I mean, that's, you know, it doesn't work quite that simply, but, and so, I'm not looking, you know, and I don't think, you know, certainly our folks from agriculture are looking to try to just put a fee in place to charge somebody. So, I think, to your point, Mr. Chair, and what's been said by others, is that, you know, Nav, go back, and again, give us an idea of, you know, because there are different, some of our surrounding counties do it differently than us, and again, you know, this needs to be comfortable for our community, for our county, but I think in the spirit of things to what Mr. Kennedy said, but certainly others, let's, you know, let's take a real serious look at this, and recognizing there's an effort that's going to be involved here, but, and maybe it's not us running a program. Maybe we have a, you know, a third-party, you know, agreement, you know, with somebody to manage it for us. I don't know. But I'd like to explore it further, yes.
Yeah, we'll bring back when we're ready to sign.
Thank you. So, you want a date?
Actually, if I could not have a date, let us, let me work with planning, and then come back and let you know what date we have.
Okay.
I just want to see how much work's going to go into this.
That's fair. That's fair. I believe Supervisor Serna has...
So, as we move forward, and as you've heard from some of my colleagues, in terms of an interest in refining this, and perhaps continuing to keep this in front of us, I'd also like to know whether or not there's any potential risk of meeting unintended consequences, meaning that if you were to go down the path, far, relative to a fee program, regardless of who administers it, whether it's the county or some of the third party, could there possibly be instances where the mitigation that you would have acquired if you had not had the fee program, and you simply followed kind of the natural process, or as ad hoc as it may be, when it comes to negotiating development agreements and figuring out, you know, pathways for entitlements for projects, is there the prospect that agriculture could actually sustain less resource space to mitigate the impacts if you simply narrowed the discussion to a fee program and stopped the conversation at that point? That's one thing I haven't heard anything from staff on, I haven't heard, haven't heard it discussed here at the board, I don't know if it's come up in conversations outside of this chambers, and I'm not suggesting that there's an inherent risk that that would happen frequently, but the kind of law of unintended consequences does kind of raise its ugly head on occasion when it comes to dealing with the uncertainties of urban and suburban development. So, something to think about.
Okay, that's helpful. We'll take that into account as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
I need a motion to continue Item 63 to May 14th. This is the report back on flood mitigation for the Point Pleasant area.
Ms. Chair, I would move to continue, I just wanted to, I don't know if anybody's in the audience, that there's some additional information, I think, that needs provided at the staff level on this. I know there are folks that are waiting, and have been in a queue to, you know, potentially raise their houses and to do other things that would, you know, be individually applied. And I've had a chance to talk at least briefly with the water resources staff, but again, I appreciate the work you went into this one, I'm going to ask for some, a bit more information between now and May 14th, but we'll be prepared to hear it then, so.
Okay, the chair will second that, but before we vote, I do have a card from Wendy Wilkinson. Do you understand we're continuing this, and are you good not speaking today? You can, you, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, and we have our appointments left.
Yep, so nominations, Item 64. You are continuing to May 14th, the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Continuing to May 21st, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to June 4th, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, and the Sacramento Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board. And for your matters today, we have the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters.
Matthew Burnett is...
Okay. Disability Advisory Commission, Mr. Kennedy.
The chiefs recommend continuing to May 21st.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Reappoint Ted Walter.
And South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to June 4th.
And Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue to May 21st.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations. All that's left are the CEO comments.
No comments.
Supervisor comments.
Good job.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.
The closed session.
The closed session, that's right.